Hello and welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley, joined today by Colin. Hey Colin.
How you doing everybody?
Hang in there bud. All right, how are you guys doing? Head over into the chat. Let us know where you're coming in from. Thrilled to have you here today where we are going to be talking about how to find the right people for your young living business. This is something that especially if you're brand new to Young Living or you're newer to the idea of sharing Young Living, maybe you're excited to get outside of just who you know right now and you want to really start building a bigger business. This is definitely something that you're going to want to tune in for and follow along with. This really is kind of the key to breaking away from your shortlist of who you could pick up the phone and call and invite over to to smell some oils and potentially buy their first kit and into a space where you have people starting to seek you out as someone that they would like to learn from and of course, work with to achieve their goals. So again, welcome. Don't be shy. Head over into the chat. Say hello. We offer this call every Thursday at noon US Eastern Time to anyone who is a Young Living brand partner anywhere in the world. A lot of the time, we talk about tech and ways to use the Get Oiling platform to work smarter. And sometimes we talk about topics like this one that should be helpful to anyone who is a brand partner. It's totally free call to anyone, so feel free to invite your teams to join you on calls like these. Certainly love to be a part of helping you guys spread the word and get oils into every home. So again, welcome. Excited to have you. Colin and I are going to pop out a video and get into some slides that I've prepared for you guys here today. Excited to share some of this with you and then get into maybe some discovery with you to maybe dial in a little bit better who it is that you're speaking to when you're putting yourself out there trying to attract the right people to your young living business. So again, welcome. Thrilled to have you here. All right. So today we are going to talk about what an ideal client is and why it matters if this is something that's new to you. We'll talk about ways to define your ideal client. If you have a general idea, we'll talk about ways to refine yours further. We'll talk about how we can tailor our content and our business strategy toward attracting these ideal clients so that we don't feel like we're just posting and hoping that someone might bite or respond. And we'll give some really clear and specific examples of what it looks like to define and refine your ideal client. So going from where you may be right now towards something that makes a bit more sense, that feels natural to you so that it's easy for you to go out and do the things that your business needs such as showing up on social media, writing things for your website and just generally putting yourself out there. And then of course, as always, we will get into live help and Q and A. If you are here today looking for help or support, we are here for you. If you are interested in working together on today's call, we do have some space available. And of course, if you would like to sign up for a live work review in the future, that's an option as well. Go ahead and add any questions that you might have, whether they be now or later to the Q and A. So we can make sure that we get to those as we go through the call. If you'd like to join us or invite your team to join us on a future call like this one, you can go to getoiling.com/weeklyworksession. This is by and for brand partners designed to help you grow your business. So feel free to come and join us. And of course, if you are part of Get Oiling and you would like access to help, if you would like one-on-one help on a call just like this one, every Thursday, the second half of our calls are open season to work together. And if you would like to reserve space, dedicated space, we could have 15 minutes of just your space, up to that amount, potentially more depending on if anybody else signs up to just work on what it is that you need help with. That's totally free and you have access to this. If you go to getoiling.com/web site review, we could talk about your strategy. We could talk about edits, projects, things like that that you're doing inside of Get Oiling. Sky's the limit there. And if you would like to hand off your projects for someone else to do them for you, our team has got you covered. Go to getoiling.com/concierge to learn more about our talented team and what they can do for you. All right. Let me know in the chat or raise your hand if you feel like you have clarity on who your ideal client is. Now, this could be you have you have some clarity and it's working for you, right? Or maybe you thought you did and you're not really getting the results that you want, right? What does that look like? So let's talk about this for just a bit and then we can get into some discovery here today. Actually really looking forward to working with you guys one-on-one here for whoever's interested in doing that here on today's call. So if that is you, go ahead and pop into the Q and A and tell me a little bit about who you think your ideal client is and we can work on that here together. All right. So an ideal client is the person that you can serve best. And Stacy said here, my ideal client is someone like me. That's exactly right. Your ideal client is someone who has been, who is in the shoes that you were in before, right? They are experiencing something most of the time that you have experienced previously and you can turn around on your path, walking forward, you can turn back and say, hey, let me give you a hand up, right? So that means that everyone, everyone who's here on the call today, whether you discovered Young Living yesterday or earlier today, you can turn around and help somebody, right? Because somebody doesn't know what you know and that you used to not know, right? So your ideal client is you and it's someone that you're uniquely capable of serving because they have those similarities with you. This is someone who truly needs and values what you offer, right? And so this is where we're departing from the idea that it's just the people that are around me. It's my friends, it's my neighbors, it's my family, it's my community. We need to look for the people who are looking for what we have to offer, right? And if we're not getting the response that we're wanting, we may be looking in the wrong places or speaking to the wrong people. Focusing on your ideal client makes your content and your messaging more effective because when you're trying to talk to everyone, you are connecting with no one, right? If we're putting ourselves out there as as just the the most accessible vanilla plain version of what we are and what we have to offer, we are going to be overlooked. But we come out with our flavor, our scent, our spice, if you will. The people who love that are going to listen, they're going to perk up, they're going to identify with what you have to say and they're going to connect, right? So even if you're putting in the good work of creating content, putting yourself out there, or maybe you've been frustrated with using social media because you're posting and posting and posting and nothing is happening. It may be because of this, it may be that we are in the hopes of trying to just get someone to take a look. We're actually not speaking to anyone at all. Does that make sense? So most people, this is probably every single one of us here, we start sharing Young Living by helping who we know. But in order for us to grow, we have to start intentionally attracting people that we don't know yet who are for us, right? People that we are put here to help. And I think that this is a really, this is a really, really important thing for us to get clear and out of the way up here at the top. Everyone here is a brand partner looking to grow a brand partner business. But it's really important that you make this shift in order to be successful. What you offer is not Young Living. Let's let that one sink in. This is really important. You're trying to find an ideal client so that they can take advantage of what you have to offer. And I'm telling you right now, what you offer is not Young Living. What you offer are solutions to problems, achievement of goals, a better way of living and guidance and support for the achievement of these things. This is what you offer. Young Living is part of how you deliver on what you offer, but it is not what you deliver, right? We are not affiliate marketers, we are brand partners. And you can behave like an affiliate marketer and have a cute Instagram account and post product pictures all day and hopefully get some sales here and there. But I'm going to tell you right now, that strategy compared to somebody who is deliberately intentionally trying to track, attract and build relationships with people who are interested in making real changes to better themselves, their lives, their health and the health of their families and the people around them. One of these strategies is going to get your residual income for 20 plus years and one of them is going to keep you in the churn of trying to find new people constantly. One of them requires a little bit more work upfront without posting a bunch of pictures of products. It means that we need to talk to people. But if we do this right, we can build a solid, sustainable business that's willable to generations in our family. And that's what we're here for, right? We're not here to just grab some affiliate cash. There's plenty of companies that offer that. Young Living gives you the tools that you need to help people make life-changing habit changes, life-changing decisions, life-changing incorporation of products and routines that make their lives better, their families' lives better and downstream, the planet better, communities better, right? And the way that we get there is by connecting with people, right? All right. So let's talk about what we need to ask ourselves in order to figure out who our person is, who is our ideal client. So knowing that I'm not just trying to get Young Living into any home I can get it into. And granted, look, if you've got the opportunity and someone is open and they aren't your ideal client, serve them. It's okay. I'm not telling that you you need to to shut yourself off off to opportunities that don't perfectly align with who your ideal client is. I'm talking about where you put the majority of your efforts. If you put the majority of your efforts into attracting the right people that you are looking for, that you are called to serve, you will be able to build a network of people because each person that you attract has got other qualities that are different than yours, right? And thus have connections to people who are different from you, right? You're not going to build an army of clones here. We're building a network with a thread of continuity, right? Okay, so let's take a pause for just a second. Maybe grab yourself a notes app if you're on a laptop or desktop, grab yourself a pen and paper if that's something that you prefer to work with. And of course, feel free to screenshot these questions if you want to sit with them later. These are the questions we need to ask. First, in your heart, who do you feel called to help? Who is it that you truly want to show up for? Now, I know that there are many of us, hello, yellow personalities, we want to help everybody. I want to help everyone who is suffering. I want to help everyone, right? But we have to first set our intentions. In order for us to be able to spread ourselves wide, we need to become better resourced. And in order to become better resource, we have to start by doing something that we're really good at so that we can build capital, right? We build capital by focusing on what we're good at and from that capital, we can go and spread out farther, right? So who do you feel called to help? Who can you serve and serve well? What are their biggest struggles, frustrations, challenges? These are the things that they're waking up at night thinking about. These are the nagging things that they're talking about with their friends, their family, perhaps their practitioners that they see. They're going to Google, they're they're asking questions. These are things that they're actively aware of, right? What are they actively aware of that they want to change, fix, solve, achieve? And what are the goals and dreams? If they solve those problems, if they heal those frustrations, if they overcome those challenges, what does life look like for them? What do they want? What do they want to become that they feel like they can't quite do on their own? And what kind of support are they looking for? Is this someone who is fully aware of what they need? And they just don't know where the the subsequent parts are for the the puzzle they need to finish completing? Or are they someone that needs handholding in a bigger way? What does that look like? What stage of awareness are they in? Now, for those of us, this is really important. I want you to, let's let's take our oily hats off for just a minute and think back to when we didn't know what we know now. When you were introduced to Young Living, what did you know about essential oils? About green living, about health and wellness? What did you know about how to solve the problems that you've solved for yourself using these products in this lifestyle? Think about where you were. If you look at yourself, you where you are right now on a linear journey from one to 1,000, you may be at, you know, step 765, you may have been on this journey for a long time, you've come a long way. You may be at step 50 because you didn't start that long ago. What you need to know is, is that the majority of people that you're going to help are in stages one through 12. Almost everyone who is a brand partner, who's used Young Living products, has a hero product, knows enough that they love it and want to share it. You are miles away from the people who need help. So if you can turn around and help them and recognize that they are in stage one, two, three, four, 12, right? You are in the early, early stages. You can help them. You don't have to worry about being an expert in all of this. You don't need to understand constituent products and the, you know, and the the chemical components of essential oils and how they work on the body. You do not need a PhD in products to be successful at this, right? What you do need is your story. What you do need is awareness of where you are and where you have been because you need to be able to identify what stage your people are in, right? Majority of them are not going to be super far along. Actually, people who are super far along say you're at you're at step 285 in your journey and you meet somebody that's at step 110. That's actually going to be someone really difficult to close. It's going to be hard to get that one to get started with Young Living. It is easier to get somebody started who is in the earlier stages of awareness, right? To help bring them along, to help provide them support, show them the way, right? Are they a beginner? Are they experienced? Are they skeptical? And then what does their daily life look like? We want to step outside of looking at someone like a list of symptoms on a page and really look at them as a fully 3D human being. What are their habits? What are their hobbies? How do they spend their time? What's important to them? This provides you with another way to look at who they are on the whole. You probably have things in common with them. Maybe it's a sense of humor. Maybe it's an outlook on the world or a sense of duty to community. Maybe you share the same faith or walk of faith, right? What does their daily life look like? What do you have in common with them? And what words and phrases, this is really important, what words and phrases do they use to describe their needs? Now, the more advanced you get in your understanding, the bigger your vocabulary will become as it pertains to these products and their application to the solutions that you provide. But we have to remember that as we grow, we are we are moving away in that linear path from the language of understanding of the people who are at step one, two, 12, 14, et cetera. The farther you move along, the more important it is for you to turn back and remember where you were before so that you can recontextualize what you've learned so that it makes sense to the people who are at their earlier stages of understanding, right? So let's talk about what this looks like in a real sense, right? So if we have an overgeneralized approach, we are showing up and saying, I want to help everyone live a healthier lifestyle. This is probably you, at least in the beginning, right? This is for everyone. We know that these products could go into every home. No matter what kind of issue or objection someone might have, there is something that Young Living offers that could make a massive difference in that person, in that home, if they would just listen, right? We all know this. I want to help everyone. So I share wellness tips for people who want to be healthier. That sounds nice enough, right? Share wellness tips for people who want to be healthier so that maybe they might be curious and and then we can talk about products that can help them solve their problems, right? Let's talk about what this looks like if we make it a little better. I help women in midlife create simple wellness habits to support their hormones, energy and overall vitality. How about that? Lot more zoomed in here, right? So if your person is a woman in midlife who is experiencing changes, is feeling alone and frustrated, feels unheard and unsupported by the people who are tasked to provide her care in the medical world, you show up and you give her real tips, she's going to trust and love what you have to say pretty quickly. If you come out and you say, this is who I help, if this is indeed who you help, right? And again, if we are stepping back and we are not putting, we're not blanketing our online presence and our personal brand with Young Living and we're talking about this instead, the path to talking about Young Living products once we start a conversation with someone becomes very clear, yes? Right? If this is who you're helping and you're creating tips because you live this life and you are, you know, you're solving problems for yourself or have solved problems for yourself. Remember, you're further along in your journey. You're looking back on where you used to be and you are leaving these breadcrumbs as tips for people who don't know what you know yet. When those people love what you have to say and they're like, hey, I'm struggling. I feel like I'm not getting help anywhere. Can you help me? They're going to come to you with that question because they already know the answer is yes because you have made clear that this is who you're for, right? So we say, I focus on helping women who are experiencing the early signs of perimenopause, make simple swaps that improve their sleep, digestion and daily stress, right? So this is a way to really make clear who you're for, if this is who you're for. So this works because when you're going out and you're creating a blog post, a podcast episode, a YouTube video or just posting on social media, you've got specific content that's specifically relatable to the people that you want to connect with and it helps to attract them without them having to guess what you're talking about or who you're for, right? Very clear who you're for when you come across this way. And it helps you to build trust with them more quickly and to move them toward engagement with you. Because remember, this isn't about getting them to click a link and go buy a product. This is about getting into a conversation to help them adopt a lifestyle so that they are on loyalty rewards, maxing out those benefits every month forever, right? Much rather have that than someone who buys a kit once and never comes back, right? So we want to build trust and engagement so that we can have a conversation that gets them locked into product that they will love and that will change their life, right? Now, here's another example. Maybe you want to focus on the people you already know. This is actually totally fine. If you're just getting started and you haven't talked to the 20 closest people to you, the people who are in your contacts and your phone, right? Then that is absolutely something you need to do. You need to talk to people and you're going to get good at talking to people who already know and trust you, right? But when this is your focus, we can say, I talk about natural living because that's what my friends and family are into. If that's you and you're a part of a community that is into natural living, congratulations. Like tell us more and we will all move there, right? Because this is not the reality for the majority of us. So we say, I mostly share things that work for me personally. Again, this is, this is a fine place to start, but let's make it better. I help busy homeschool moms simplify their home health and meal planning with easy DIYs and budget-friendly wellness tips. How about that? Would that make it clear to someone that you are for them if they are a busy homeschool mom? Who might have a little bit of budget concerns, who wants to make sure that she is maxing out the benefit she can provide to her family without breaking the bank? I provide natural living solutions for moms who want a safer home but don't have time to research every product swap. Super clear. And these can both be true for you, right? So here again, we're attracting people who truly need what we offer. We are not being fuzzy at all about this. We're creating content that speaks to a mom that has a lot to get done. She's busy, she doesn't have time and benefit to you. This means you can create quick content, right? We can move beyond our immediate circle here to bring in new leads and create content that's speaking directly to a specific person. Now, our final example here is moving beyond everyone. Again, we all know this is true. Anyone can use essential oils. Yep, that's true. So I just share a mix of tips. I post about different wellness topics every week and hope people connect with something. Maybe this sounds like you, right? Because these things are fine. It's true. We want to share what we know. And that coming from the heart is genuinely such a good thing for you to do, but let's make it more effective, right? I help first-time moms use natural solutions for sleep, stress and a toxin-free home without overwhelm. So if I'm talking to first-time moms, if that's who I want to focus on, because now my kids are teenagers or now, you know, my kids are out, you know, we're past the newborn stage, I'm not having any more kids. I want to talk about this because I was just there. I dealt with all of these things and mom right now feels lost. She feels overwhelmed. She cares about these things, but it feels like too much for her and I am going to help give her the healthy shortcut. I'm going to be her support. I guide people who are just getting started with essential oils through the basics of safe, effective use so they feel confident. That's also fine. I would, I would argue that we need to get more specific than just people though, right? Who? If you say, I help people, that means we need to refine further, right? We need to provide identity points for people to understand that we are talking to them, right? So if we say, I help individuals, they stop listening. They stop listening unless they already know you and they're already invested in what you have to say. I help individuals, I help people, I help business owners. No, I help women who are this, right? I help, and you don't necessarily have to gender it, right? Depending on who it is that you're speaking to, it does make it more effective though, if that is who you're speaking to. So this works because our content is clear and focused. People know what to expect from you wherever you show up and it helps the curious people become loyal customers. All right. So let's talk about how we can use our ideal client profile. Once we've got that figured out, so we can generate content first and foremost, that speaks directly to their struggles and goals. Really importantly, when you say, I help this person who identifies this way to solve this problem without encountering this obstacle. That phrase you can put into Write With AI and Get Oiling and you can ask it to come up with ideas for blog posts or social media posts for you, right? You say, I am this and I do this for this person. Suggest 10 topics for social media posts. And then you could ask it to come up with a content for it too, if you like. We want to use their language to make your message feel personal and relatable. Again, this is where you have to always remember where you came from. You can't speak to someone who is at stage five of their journey from stage 507, right? We need to go and revisit the language we were using at stage five. We don't need to speak above people. We need to meet them where they are, right? And again, it's really easy to fly over the heads of people with the understanding that you worked hard to possess today. We have to do the work to revisit the words that they're using. Remember the ones you used. Remember how you used to talk about how this made you feel, right? We do evolve and we need to be aware of how we have evolved so that we can go back and speak to the people who haven't made it there yet, right? We need to obviously offer solutions that match where they are in their journey, right? So depending on who you're speaking to, you want to make sure that you're not trying to teach the teacher. We're not trying to go too advanced in what it is that we're putting together. Maybe you are creating a funnel, right? You want to attract leads, you want to build a lead magnet. Maybe you want to create a course, whatever that looks like. Really be mindful about serving people on their journey where they are, right? Because you have learned something extraordinary and you want to create something that teaches it. You really want to be thinking about how many people are actually far along in that journey and understand that the biggest opportunity for you is much closer to beginner stage, right? And then we want to make sure to choose the right marketing channels where they spend time. If you want to focus on working with professional business owners, people who are busy, who are high-functioning, who are maybe dealing with stress, burnout, adrenal fatigue, they probably don't know the words adrenal fatigue. So we don't want to use those when we're talking to them, but just so you guys understand. You are not probably going to find them hanging out on Facebook, right? You'll be more likely to find them on LinkedIn though, right? If this is a busy mom, you're probably not going to reach her as easily with a 30-minute YouTube video than you would with a 90-second short on TikTok or YouTube or, you know, a short video on on Facebook, right? You see the difference? Choose the marketing channels where they spend time so that you can be more easily found by them. And then you want to take this statement that you come up with and update your about me on your website, your social bios and the pages that you might have where you share this information to speak directly to them. Now, your content and messaging will become clearer and more effective the more you take this clarity into account and you'll start attracting the right people, not just anyone. Or in most of the time, when we're trying to go for anyone, we're getting no one, right? And here, our leads will be more engaged and ready to buy and you'll be spending less time with people kicking tires who aren't a fit for your business. All right. So let's get into some life help and Q and A. I see a question here from Felba. Pop your hand up for me, Felba, if you want to just chat through this together live here on the call, otherwise I'll read this out. Uh, pop your hand up for me, Felba, if you want to just chat through this together, uh, live here on the call. Otherwise I'll read this out and, and, and I'll, I'll talk about it here. Let me know. Uh, let's see. Uh, yes, perfect. Hey, how can we help? Oh, it looks like you're muted. Are you able to unmute? Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and read off your question, uh, and, and of course, if you're able to unmute, by all means, please interrupt me. Um, all right. So Felba says, um, I need help when it comes to sharing on social media. You've tried to help us see how we should avoid sharing our products, talking about Young Living oils, supplements, et cetera. But instead to try to share who we are, what we care about, and bring value to our audience. Can you explain this a little more? I use my oils daily and often and want to share what I do and, uh, how and why I do. But how do I do this without telling them that I'm with Young Living? Some folks, uh, follow and end up buying from Amazon or elsewhere. Okay. So if you are getting a lot of engagement, um, and you are focusing very specifically on, uh, maybe like from a topic perspective on essential oils, then it, okay, let me just rewind just a little bit here. It is not the end of the world, or even necessarily always a bad thing to say Young Living, right? It is tricky though, right? Because what you're wanting to do in building a following and, um, and an audience that is always wanting to hear more from you who are not current Young Living members, right? This is something that typically happens. When we talk about Young Living, we tend to just attract Young Living users, right? Uh, so if you've got people, you're, you know, you're talking about what you're doing, how you're using things, then you may want to consider having a link in bio or a link that you share in the comments, uh, to maybe a wish list or something like this where people can go and access the products that you're talking about. If you're seeing that kind of curiosity from people. So I definitely don't want you to miss that opportunity if people are truly following your lead and wanting to take advantage of what it is that you're offering. Another approach that you could use to this end, uh, is for instance, if you are talking about how you use an oil and what it does, um, you might want to maybe always include a little caveat of, oh, hey, by the way, it's important where you get yours from. You can click the link, uh, you know, in, in the comments or however, you know, wherever you're posting this content. Click the link to learn more about why it's important to choose your oils appropriately and learn more about, about, about the ones that I use, right? And then you could send them to the Why I Chose Young Living page on your website, perhaps if you use that template from us, from the Brand My Business workshop. That could have links to products. It could have, you know, you know, links for them to join Young Living. Um, you could of course also, um, you know, invite them to have a discussion with you. Um, that would be another option too. So say what you're gonna say. I use, you know, today I'm using frankincense and here are all the things that frankincense can do for you. And, um, I'm using it this way. Now, really quick, it's important for you to understand that the quality of what you use is really critical. And it's important that you know how to use it correctly. I actually offer free consults. If you're interested in incorporating, uh, some of the practices that you see me using, I can help you set up a routine for yourself and it's totally free. Click the link below and schedule, schedule a 15-minute call with me, right? So that's another option there too. Some people will always just be led by price. And that's why I don't like putting product upfront, because once somebody, like if that's where their thinking is, right? And they don't know what they need to know, then they are going to go, if they are, you know, price, you know, if they're price sensitive, they're going to go try to find the cheapest version of whatever that is that you said that you were using, right? And you haven't even had the opportunity to address that important part of the conversation, which is, okay, look, there's a way to do this. And there's a place to get it from, and both of these are very important, but we need to look at this in the broader context of how to achieve your goals, right? I hope that that makes sense. Um, I, I, I think that you should just make sure that you are always providing, if you are going to be placing product in video or you're using product in video, uh, that you say, hey, don't just run and buy this on Amazon, right? Really important that you don't just go do that because it's not necessarily safe. Uh, I can help you, et cetera. Book a call with me. Um, that would be the way that I would present that if that's how you're gonna create content. Um, generally speaking though, I would reserve, like, if it were me, I would create content that isn't product-forward, that is concept-forward. I'm teaching them things that don't necessarily directly involve a product, so that they can move in a step deeper and maybe get a protocol. And that protocol, which they have to become a lead to get, that protocol would then maybe have all of the links to the products that they would buy, right? So, you know, I'm gonna talk about my morning routine. Um, I do this thing. I do that thing and the other. I actually power my morning routine, uh, with essential oils that fill specific purposes. If you would like details on that, click the link below and I'll get you access. And that's where they put their name and, you know, on the landing page and then you send them, uh, maybe a PDF, uh, or a page, a campaign, et cetera, that's got links to all those products. I guess you weren't able to unmute. If you're able to, please let me know. And I'd love to chat with you about this further. Okay. Have a personal profile set to professional mode. When is it helpful to have a separate business page? To keep personal things separate for those who are just following me because they want to keep in touch with me and my family. Um, that's gonna be a little tricky. Depends on the platform that you're using and whether or not you have goals to monetize your content. Uh, so I would follow the advice of, of, uh, creators who monetize if your goal is to monetize your content at any point. Um, and generally speaking, where you are primarily operating, um, as a brand partner, like if brand partner is your primary goal for generating revenue, uh, then I would keep your profiles personal because that allows you to connect better one-on-one with people. If you have a larger brand that encompasses more, you know, you've got a studio, like a yoga studio or massage or something else that you do, um, that might, uh, it might behoove you to have a, a, a business page for that. But yeah, it's really gonna depend on, on your, um, your goals, uh, long-term, uh, for monetization. But as a network marketer, generally speaking, a personal profile is always gonna be better for you. All right. Brandy says, my ideal client has shifted since pivoting into design. I want to talk to work-from-home entrepreneur moms struggling home and work-life. I work primarily with oily entrepreneurs, so the people I, I work with already use oils. Uh, so I need to serve them with my content, but also adapted to speak to others who are in business who don't use oils yet. So, um, hmm. I mean, I would maybe create, um, uh, like a bridge between, right? So you, it, it's, it is possible to speak to people who own a business, who need help, uh, designing a beautiful presence, right? To talk about what it also looks like to design, uh, a beautiful life, right? Feel beautiful, have a beautiful business, right? Um, look for the threads that kind of combine these things together. Have an offer that serves, uh, the oily business people, because obviously if they're already oily, then they don't need to be in, in the, the wellness funnel per se. Some of them will arrive there and that's okay. Um, you will want to make sure that as you're collecting leads, that you are, uh, clearly tagging those, uh, into containers that make sense to you. Uh, so that way, for instance, if you want to, uh, email a list, uh, you know, for a particular offer, um, such as maybe calls, a call with you where you might want to introduce someone to Young Living, uh, you might, uh, exclude the tag for the oily people, right? Uh, because you obviously are not going to be talking to people who already have product, uh, about buying product. Uh, so I would think about it as a, you really, you have, you have two audiences, right? Like you've got your business owners who are not oily and then you've got your oily people who, uh, are also business owners. Um, or, or you've got your, you've got the wellness, sorry. You've got business owners. You've got, you've got potential wellness customers. And then you've got like, there's these oily people that are in between, right? So it's like a Venn diagram. And, uh, and you can create offers that serve these two, right? And, and tag, these are, these are specific lists, right? Uh, but then there are the people who are oily. And so you just want to make sure that you're creating, uh, resources for them, uh, that allow you to clearly identify them in your system. Um, and then just make sure that where you are positioning offers that are designed to convert Young Living leads for you. That, that is positioned in a place, uh, that is not attracting people that are already with Young Living. I hope that makes sense. Feel free to pop your hand up if you want to chat about it. Okay, uh, let me see. Where's the best way to look up how to add Stripe so I can have a payment option on events? There is an article, yes. And the article's gonna be the best place to go because it is just a little bit tricky to, uh, to show, uh, certain uh, account features, uh, that have that enabled without, you know, showing privileged information. So, uh, let me just pop right up here to show you real quick. Uh, if you type in the, here, you click the little question here and you type in payments, uh, payment processing, connecting Stripe, there is a step-by-step here that's got, um, screenshots and everything, uh, for you to follow. So that's where I would go, uh, for that. It's really simple. Uh, I've been through the process myself. It is just a matter of, um, connecting Stripe, right? You're gonna click a button inside of Get Oiling. It's gonna take you to Stripe. You're going to set up your information in Stripe and then it's basically from that point forward, uh, Stripe's gonna tell you what to do. All right. If you have questions and you want to chat through anything together, uh, feel free to pop into the Q and A or just pop your hand up. If you, um, if you would like to talk about your ideal client and maybe, uh, explore some ways to further refine who that is, how you reach them, uh, and how you create, uh, those sort of, you know, containers, if you will. Let me know. Uh, Camelia, did, did you want to chat? Yeah, there we go. Hi, how are you?
Hi, team. Um, to everyone there. So as you know, my, the broad knowing who, I mean, I've gone through activities to try to narrow that down. I, I like how you did it today because I am that, I will serve you. And trying to get it down to who am I really? Because my heart goes to, because I have experienced in many areas and where I came in. So with, yes, I was a homeschooling child. Now my last two are, leave me. So I've done that. And of course, the toxin thing is where I really came in and, you know, the things with family, but just general health and wellness and not, you know, taking control of being your own investigator for your health is also important, uh, to me. And helping people know that is there and then locking arms with those who do. And opening that up for people who love it, but also for those like, what? Really? Because they get really excited about all the, I love that newness of possibilities and solving problems.
So there's, so Camelia, knowing, knowing you, I would, I would seize the opportunity to practice self-care boundaries. Cause I know you're a caregiver and you are endlessly devoted to the betterment of others. I would encourage you to focus on yourself and taking care of yourself. And then get out there, turn around and go show caregivers how to make sure that they aren't neglecting themselves. Because that is, and, and, and I, I, for anybody watching this, if you're someone who, uh, has a goal with Young Living products, maybe you want to lose some weight. Invite people on the journey with you. You don't have to have something fully figured out and perfected to be able to bring people along with you and to show them along the way. Remember, it's a journey. We're all moving together. You are just at least a few steps ahead of someone else that you need to help. And sometimes this means focusing on a journey that we need to go on ourselves.
So you're saying, start where I am now. All of those other great things on my acreage, so to speak, of experience is great. Let's start where I am now because that's where my.
Mm-hmm. It's the low-hanging fruit, as it were. Um, it is, and, and, and it serves, um, I mean, if, if you can imagine, Camelia, if you had, if you had dozens of people who are on your team, who cares deeply about serving others as you do, who knew how to do that while taking good care of themselves, how powerful of a team would you have?
Right.
You have a superpower.
So that is, and it doesn't just mean someone's taking care of somebody, but someone who has a heart that truly cares about people who will give themselves, not necessarily just somebody in their home, just those people. So I did kind of write about that a little bit, you know, I started, but it's like, well, and then the connection and just with self-care, with self-care can mean, I guess, all of those things. So that's.
Absolutely. This can be moms. This can be people in ministry. It's not necessarily just people who are actually providing care to a family member in their home, right? No, that, these are, these are people who are in the giver role, right? So.
Yeah, it's like my, when I do trainings for, when I'm teaching the teachers, you know, training the trainer. I did a lot of training the trainers type thing. So it sounds like it's kind of that, helping those who are helping others to help themselves as they're helping others. Is that right?
Kind of, yeah. I mean, the simplest way to put this is, uh, is that, and, and, and I only say this because I, I have spent time with you and I, yeah, and, and I, I know on your heart, you want to serve anyone that you can serve and you may even go above and beyond what is maybe good for you on a physical and mental, emotional level to care for others. And it's a beautiful thing. But it's a thing that if, and, and you know this, if it's not, um, balanced, you know, according to what you need, you, you're pouring out of your cup, right? You have, you're, you're creating a hole in your cup that just stays there and you just keep pouring water in and, and it's coming out, right? So you're basically, you know, working on this for yourself, but realizing that everything that you learn to do that is something that you could turn around and serve someone else with who needs that as well. So the idea here is really just saying, you know, hey, if this is you, you are someone who is endlessly giving. Uh, you're, it's, it's on your heart to serve. You may be, you know, in ministry. You may be a caregiver. Maybe you're a teacher. Maybe you're a parent and your heart is just big this way. Uh, it's really important that we have strength and resilience and that we are cared for so that we can go out and do the work that we were gifted to do, which is caring for others, right? And that's it.
I can, but that's why it's recorded so I can just listen.
Yeah.
That is that piece. I, I think I do feel comfortable there because that's where I am now. And I can bring in all the wisdom experience that I have, but I certainly have learned or experienced a lot through those things. And yes. And, and what you just said, that's the piece I've had to struggle. Like, how do I put that sentence? And because that, for whatever reason, as you know, is that part that has me stalled. Um, and honestly frustrated for myself. It's like, I can do all this for everybody else. Good night. What is my issue? For doing it for myself. Um, so endlessly giving, hard to serve. Those words is like, I've just couldn't taste those words in my mouth to, I guess, to say them. And to define it, so.
If you could imagine yourself with all of this kind of figured out, turning around and lifting a hand out to where you are right now, say what you need to say to yourself. Say what you need to hear. And, and then think about how you, you know, if, if you were helping you, because you have these acres of knowledge, how would you help yourself do that? Create a plan and then invite others on that journey with you. And start with who you have access to right now. And it might be that you're doing this with your team first and that's totally fine. I know you have people on your team who are coded the same way. So this way, you're, you're creating healing and you're doing this thing that you need to do for yourself. And in doing so, you are strengthening yourself and then taking what you're doing, the very thing that you're doing to turn yourself into a better vessel. You're able to go and give that to others and you don't have to be a perfect vessel. We all know this. You don't have to be a perfect vessel to share good news, right? So you can make yourself a better vessel and everything that you learn and do along the way is something that can serve someone who has the same intention. So you really just want to find the people who have the same intention. And I know you, you don't have to look far to find people whose hearts are big in this way and who are focused on serving, right? But you're gonna have to practice what you preach. And it'll help you stay accountable. If it's, if it's difficult for you, and I, I know. and I, I know that there are folks here in the chat, you know what I'm talking about because this is you too. There's a lot of people like this. Young Living attracts people like this who are called to serve others, right? We can know that there's something that we need to do, but it's the doing that's difficult, right? It's, it's hard to do that thing because our motivations aren't for us. But maybe, maybe you can be the person who does that thing and shows others that they can do it too. Maybe this is an option for you to be called to leadership in this way. And man, if we could get all the people who care for others to, you know, to heal their cups so that they aren't pouring from an empty or a leaky one, like, how much better would the world be? You're qualified for that.
Leaky cup syndrome.
Yes. It's an emotional condition, isn't it?
Yes, I'm writing it down as a part of my thing because that's, you're right. Emotional condition. The leaky cup syndrome. We have leaky eye, we have leaky gut, but yes.
Yeah.
To, to articulate that for myself.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, you just have to sit, give yourself some space. Put on, whatever, put on whatever oil you find best gives you courage. And, and think about your future self, speaking to who you are now. What do you need to hear? That's going to be where the words come from because this is all stuff that you already know. Right? And it may be that you have to just start with baby steps, right? Incorporating one thing for yourself. Maybe it's setting a particular boundary. Um, you know, maybe it's, it, 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 it can be product use, but I'm going to assume that as, uh, you know, someone in a, in a, in a giver role, um, that it probably needs to be something that's more structural than just using a product. Right? Because a, an oil can help you summon the, the courage. Uh, but, uh, but it's not going to draw a boundary for you, right? Does that make sense?
Yes, it's not going to put it into action. It just keeps it at balling over stage, but need the steps that says now move.
Mm-hmm.
And with the steps to do that and with the words and this is what that looks like, which now I can take some of this into my, you know, session with I've done, you know, I have your program, your personal output. Well, now I don't know if it's really captured in the website, though I'll please that, um.
Don't worry too much about that. You'll, you'll refine that over time. What you're talking about right now is something that needs to, or what we are discussing right now is something that needs to be absorbed into your daily life. Right? Because it needs to be like, when we're talking about speaking to our ideal client, this is as we live and breathe. These, these are things that just come out. Right? And so what, what I'm suggesting, my, my recommendation to you, based on what I know about you, it does require a little bit of a step that goes before that, right? Because I, I know that you have tremendous power to influence and impact others because of who you are and how big of a servant's heart you have. But in order for you to be able to embody that, you have to walk the walk, right? And so you have to kind of figure out like what that looks like for you and then you can invite others on the journey with you, helping you to stay accountable to the process. Does that make sense?
Yes. Yes, do it for myself first step of reach. Do it. Figure out what helps me at one step at a time. And I don't have to wait till I have all the steps, share that baby step. And then keep growing, kind of like the old cotton candy machines where you take it around where it starts with just a corn.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, you know, if, if it were me, I would just go to my social media channels, to my email list, wherever you've got people that will pay attention to what you have to say. I would go and get vulnerable and say, you know, for this amount of time, I have struggled with X, Y, or Z thing. And guys, this is for everybody. Um, you know, if it's, you know, losing this last thirty pounds since the baby or, you know, it's getting better sleep. I have like, so come clean and be vulnerable and say, I have struggled with this thing for some time. And I'm going to finally do something about it. And if this is you, you feel this way, you experience these things, you identify this way. Come do this with me. I'm going to be posting my journey. I'm going to be sharing what I'm doing. If you would like to be a part, uh, if you would like to be a part of community doing this together and you would like to, you know, make these changes, let me know. Just reach out to me. I would not create a website or an event, et cetera. Like just put it out there. Start making that, right? Because you could always go back from this, this process. You could always go back and, and do something that's more tied together on your website down the road. But you need to do this for you now, right? So even if one or two people are like, yeah, I want to do that. That's perfect. Do that together. Basically, all you're going to do is say, all right, here are the things I'm going to do for myself. So, you know, two things a day, every day. And if you want to do that with me, here's how you can do it, right? When we're embarking on a journey like this, where we want to put ourselves out there and invite people into community, sometimes it's better that we aren't polished. It's often better that we're not polished, you know, that we're not doing this with like some perfect funnel, website update, et cetera. Just be a human out there, being vulnerable and human. And say, if you are this kind of human that has this kind of vulnerability too, can we do this together? I would just do that. Don't worry about getting everything right. Just get it going.
And, and you're right, because now it's like if you feel that dryness, like I have to do something again. And it could be me helping myself, even though I never really saw myself in that way, but I'm pausing and I'm seeing that. And then inviting someone who may feel the same way to come in and to identify their pieces as I identify mine. Okay.
Yeah.
That way I don't get stuck in the, oh, I've got to create this because you know how long I've been in.
Yeah, yeah, just uh, this could be a group chat for the, the, the first go round and you're going to build your confidence. You're going to see what it needs. And then it'll make perfect sense what to do and get oiling with it. Right? But you have to kind of get it going. It needs to, the concept needs to feel native to you before you can like apply tech to it and have it work and make sense.
Right, right. But you try to, you got a hunk, you've got a room full of resources, two rooms full of resources. The greatest thing is it's not a matter of having a great resource. It's a matter of being able to identify, of taking that pause of you, you can't go out of, like you said, the, the cup or one more give and just as how to put that healthy, loving, but that boundary for myself and sometime maybe self-imposed because I'm just wired that way. And it's okay to uh like is I, your face reminds me of when I brought the people and you said, why aren't you bad? And it was tr- and it was true and I kept that in the head and asked certain things that happen. It's like, you're not going to finish well if you don't stop and do well and I could build everything else and I can bring all these things and then for myself.
Yeah.
Table of someone who's bringing it, so I got to figure that out.
You got it. Take care of you. And I can't think of a better qualified person to be able to guide others on how to live and lead starting with themselves as, as someone with, with, with a giver's heart and soul. Like that's um that's who, this is who you are. This is who you are and you know what it feels like to burn the candle at both ends. And you have products that can help you with that, right? So use what you know, work on you and then take what you've learned working on you and invite other people along. And yeah, I, I, I would discourage you completely from going and changing your website, making an event, doing any tech thing with this. Just go make the post and find someone that identifies, lock arms with them and just give and show, but take your own medicine. Yeah. Put on your oxygen mask first.
Yes, yes, okay.
I hope we'll see you in July.
Yes, yes. You know, well, Ada, thank you so much.
Of course.
Bring people to your booth and tell them they must have this because the same thing is not about a product, it's about the personalities of how they lock with you and truly care. And that's why I can so clearly run around and bring people and direct them and leave them in your care, knowing that they're going to get what they need. So I'll figure that out. Thank you so much for your patience as you, now that you haven't told me this every time, but each time there's more life stuff that comes. And now I'm, I'm I, I must do this for myself now. So thank you.
We're honored to have your confidence and for you to be a part of this community. Thank you, Camelia.
Thank you.
All right. I have a question follow-up here from Felba that I'm going to answer before we get going. Uh, she says, uh, when coming up with a niche, is it helpful to narrow down as much as possible what kind of moms I serve? For example, I help Christ-centered moms struggling with pain and inflammation, experience root cause healing so they can live with uh vibrancy, purpose and joy, or better to do a wider audience and not exclude. Uh, so instead of I serve Christ-centered moms, I serve overwhelmed and exhausted moms. I want to attract Christ-centered moms who are looking to work with someone who's Christ-focused. So in that case, um, I would take that first part of the sentence. I help Christ-centered moms live with vibrancy, purpose and joy. Right? So I would actually take out, so that's, those are two specifics. And that can lead you into too specific of a place to where you're actually not attracting enough people. So I would say I help Christ-centered moms live with vibrancy, purpose and joy. Uh, and you can absolutely talk about pain and inflammation as like parts of your content, but it's not the, I only talk to Christ-centered moms who are experiencing pain. Right? So we can talk about a lot of the pains that she experiences, uh, whether that be actual physical pain uh, or any other thing that she's dealing with. Uh, but if it's important to you that you focus people, uh, you focus on people who have that uh, sort of central identity, then make sure that you do include that and know that you can have peripheral things that, that come up. All right. But at the same time, I don't want to lose those who feel, uh, that don't feel Christ-centered to feel excluded. But I do have to ask myself, who do I really want to serve? Yeah. So interestingly, uh, especially where you're talking about uh faith identity, um, you will still attract with the content that you make, right? Like this statement that you're making, you're not necessarily repeating it every time you create a piece of content, right? You could create a piece of content that talks about root cause healing for chronic back pain or something like that and talking about stretching and all kinds of other stuff. And hey, I do consults. You could do all of that, right? And that entire post is not going to be about scripture. Right? You might have some things that could be read between the lines, but you're going to be serving people who identify in a particular way. Now, yeah, you can deliberately say, I serve Christ-centered moms. And that's going to help you get onto uh interviews with podcasters who serve a similar audience, right? Uh, or people who have similar values that are scrolling for content on social media. Uh, maybe reaching people in, in different ways in that way on a social level. But on a content level, the keywords that you're using, where you're talking about inflammation or chronic pain or, um, I don't know, natural dishwashing or whatever it is that you want to talk about with your moms. You might even find people who understand or think they understand what it means to be Christ-centered and don't necessarily identify that way, but respect people who do. And you might even be able to have some other lovely conversations with them in that direction as well. So I wouldn't worry too much about isolating people out if that's who you want to attract, because that is fundamentally some, someone who's Christ-centered, right? That the fundamentally that is uh an open room that anybody could choose to walk into, right? And unless the majority of your content is going to be about strict scripture and adherence to scripture and things like that, which I suspect is probably not. Right? You're probably going to be weaving a little bit in from like a values perspective, but not like necessarily proselytizing or prescribing ways to live, right? So I, I would think Felba that you would be safe uh with including um, that being who you want to be speaking to and trusting that people who are on the edges of it are going to appreciate that as well if they even notice it, right? Um, because, because yeah, like when, when you're talking about, um, you know, a, a particular issue that is experienced by a Christ-centered mom uh who wants to live joyfully and vibrantly. You may have content that doesn't even bring up anything remotely religious or scriptural. Right? And that's still going to attract those other people. And if they're repelled by the idea that you are serving that audience, then it's probably a good thing that they don't stick around because that's who you want to attract, right? So yeah, um, I would go yes to the how they identify, but maybe remove the, that they're experiencing pain and just talk about who they want to be. I hope that makes sense. I hope that that helps. And I so appreciate you guys sticking around and being incredible members of this community. We'll be back same time next week. Until then, we'll see you in the Facebook group and in the inbox. Take care, everybody.